Good evening.
Good evening.
Let's try it again. Good evening. There we go. Thanks. I'd like to call the regular monthly board meeting of the Board of Fire Commissioners meeting, December 3rd, Monday, December 3rd, to order. Please rise if you're Chaplain Chitwood.
We'd like to have a moment of silence for five firemen who have lost their lives over the past month across the U.S., and then we'll pray. Dear God, give honor to those who have given their lives in service of others and have made a sacrifice to help others. I pray, Lord, that you will bless them. I pray that you will bless their families during their time of loss and watch over them. And, Lord, we thank you for those that serve so faithfully and take care of so many across the nation and here in Benita, and we pray for your continued protection on them as they help and as they lead others. Lord, we ask that you might bless our country, our nation. Thank you for the freedom we have. Be with this meeting tonight. Just grant wisdom and insight on the things that are discussed. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any public comment on agenda items this evening? Seeing none, first order of business is the congratulations to Commissioner Murphy on his wing.
Thank you, sir.
And first order of business is to the election of officers. I'd like to make an option to keep it as it is. Someone wants to second that?
I'll second that.
Can you repeat that?
I just made a motion to keep the officers the way we have them.
Hang on a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to make a motion that Jeff take over the E Chairman of the Board of the
We have a motion on the floor right now. We need to vote on that.
Aren't we discussing it?
We're discussing the motion that's open on the floor. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Is that approved? Any other motions?
Yes. Need a motion to approve the November meeting minutes, November 5th, 2018.
I'll make that motion. The second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
One motion for the November 2018 financials, current expenditures and ACH payments, the acknowledgement of financial report and the acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between accounts.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item, before we get started on that, it's the presentations, and I'm going to change the order around here a little bit. If Assistant Chief DeWitt would do the honors for our chief.
Yeah, normally, excuse me, normally, the chief always for the 10-year pins and the years of service pins, obviously, the chief usually does that, but I would be remiss tonight if I didn't stand up and say something. Chief Dagel is getting his pin tonight, 25 years. So for 25 years, this person's shown a dedication, drive, and determination that this district has always strived to have in employees. When you think about it, Chief Dagel is not even 50, so over half his life, he's spent here at the Benita Springs Fire Department. One thing I will say about Chief Dagel is, you know, 10 years ago, when Chief Kinsey asked him to come up, without hesitation, he came up and became Deputy Chief of EMS and so on, continuing his education to get his master's degree and so on, to become the fire chief. So with that amount of dedication and determination, I just felt it fitting that I would like to congratulate Chief Dagel for 25 years of service, not only with the fire department, but another four years of service with the United States Marine Corps. So he's very well dedicated to country and department. So congratulations, Chief Dagel.
And sorry to speak out of turn, sir.
You want to get a picture with your pin?
Sure.
Let's do this the right way here.
I've done this so many times, it's not for myself.
Would you wear a different neck brace, or?
I should have put the scar on there.
Congratulations, Chief. Congratulations, Mr. Chair. Now it's back to you, Chief.
Yeah, that was a surprise. Thank you. I thank everybody.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. 25 years is a long time, and as I said before, you know you've been here a long time when you're hiring people that weren't born when you started here. So next, I'd also like to recognize Lieutenant Paul Canning. After 25 years, Lieutenant Paul Canning got hired with me, and I think he's back there. He's also a United States Marine. 25 years, we've worked together. We were on the same shift, I believe, at one point in time, most likely. And he's another very dedicated person. You never think that day was come, but I just want to say, Paul, congratulations, and you always have an affinity towards the gentleman that you got hired with because you've spent the same amount of time in the district. Also, in the 25-year mark, is Battalion Chief Caesar Sanchez III. I don't see him out here today. And also, our very own Deputy Chief Richard Scott, for 25 years of service. Rich and I have also worked, obviously, together for many years. He spent several years on B shift, worked his way up through the ranks as well, and as most of you know how dedicated he has been for his entire career here in Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District. And then we'll give you your pins now, gentlemen. Thank you.
Congratulations. Good to see you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chief. Thanks for your service. And next, we'll do our 10 years of service. I want to congratulate Chairman Steve Lohan for his 10 years of service. I remember the day when Steve became the chairman, got elected, that was under Chief Kinsey's watch at the time, and I recall having to put together a orientation, which we did, understanding that Commissioner Lohan really didn't know too much about fire districts at the time. But since then, he's gone out of his way to educate himself far beyond what most elected Oh, good grief.
Another 10-year.
officials do when they get elected to a particular post. Another 10-year. Sorry, Roy. It's terrible trying to look down with this thing on. Since then, Commissioner Lohan has been an intricate part of FASD and serves on the Lieutenant Roy Brown has done 10 years of service here in the Benita Springs Fire Control Legislative Committee for this FASD, and is one of the most well-versed politicians, and Rescue District, and also serves on the E Board for the Union, which shows a lot of I hate to call you that, but that's what you are, one of the most well-versed politicians dedication to try to make this place a better place to work. So along, how long have you been a lieutenant now, Roy? in the FASD community, and many people ask him his advice about special districts and
I've come out of one year.
Yeah, one year. So he did nine years as a firefighter and one year as a lieutenant, and he's a very, how to govern as a commissioner. very promising young employee here, moving forward with the district. And since then, we've also become friends, I'm proud to say. So Commissioner Lohan, Chairman Lohan, congratulations on 10 years. So thank you, Roy, for your 10 years, and continue your great service.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, next, we have the one year of service. We have Fire Inspector William Tesaro and Fire Inspector Jessica Tinklebaugh. They both, I think I've hired both of them for one year of service, and they've been doing an outstanding job, and I want to thank you for your service. You want to come up and get your pin?
Congratulations, my friend. Welcome.
That concludes the presentations, I believe. If at this time, we could take a couple of minute recess, if everybody doesn't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome to, but at this point, I know a lot of you are here just for the presentations. If you feel free to stay, but we'll take a couple of minutes if you want to leave. Okay, start back up. Next item, Commissioners' business. Start with Commissioner Murphy.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I'd like to thank Union 3444 for their support of my reelection. I'd like to thank the fellow commissioners for your support. I'd like to thank the staff and the many others who had faith in returning me to this office. It's been an honor to be of service to this community, and I look forward to the next four years. Thank you all.
Thank you. Commissioner Fitzgerald.
I have no business.
Commissioner Maturro.
Two things I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Murphy on, another four years. It's been a pleasure working with you for the past year, and with the chief's permission, I would like to ask Chief Madden and Chief Scott something that just came up.
Yes, sir.
Okay. During the invocation by Chaplain Chitwood, he mentioned that five firefighters lost their lives. That's a pretty big number, even though it's nationwide in this day and age. Are we doing everything to minimize the risk to our firefighters, and do you have all the equipment you need to keep them as safe as humanly possible? I know it's an inherently dangerous job, but I don't ever want to be up here and have to deal with the death of one of our firefighters.
Okay. My answer, my quick answer would be yes, but I'd like to give you a couple of examples of some of the things that we have and are doing to not only protect our firefighters that are out there while they're on the job and put themselves in harm's way, but also for years to come, that, you know, we all found out the increased risk of cancer and some of the other things that happen. So yes, we buy, fortunately, in Benita here, we have the budget to be able to buy the best equipment possible, and you all know that. We strive for that with everything we buy. And the reason for our bunker gear, air packs we just bought, that we talked about extensively this past year to put into budget a little early, all those things, the fire trucks we buy, even the medical equipment to protect them from exposure, we spare no expense for those things. The training, of course, goes along with that, but I think I'd like to focus a little more on the prevention that we've been involved in, and you all have seen this at the FASD, and some of the things we've talked about for the future. And cancer has been a big issue. So things like the extractors we bought in recent years, the second set of bunker gear that we just bought in this year's budget, the clearing people off the scenes earlier than keeping them there for salvage and overhaul for hours on end, and the gear that they have been exposed to all those contaminants and carcinogens and things. So all those types of things, we have changed pretty drastically in the last few years and very aggressively, I think, to protect them, not only on the scene that they're on, as they, you know, again, walk into these environments, but also for the future.
Yes, sir. We also just today released a decontamination on-scene protocol. It's a guideline with the new literature and the studies that are coming out, they're showing that it's a lot safer for a firefighter to decon while he's on scene, instead of getting into the truck with his dirty gear on with the carcinogens. So we're going to decon him outside the truck and then put him in the truck. They're going to come back here, and then they're going to go put their gear in the extractors, a washing machine for fire gear, they're going to wash their gear, and then they're going to switch into a second set of gear, which the district, you know, purchased for that purpose. So we're doing, you know, everything we can to be on that cutting edge.
And for this new protocol, we have the equipment we need to decontaminate him on the scene?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
If I can just say something on that just one little bit. With the decon, we applied for a grant through the state of Florida, and we received a grant. So every truck got, received a decon kit through the state of Florida, so it cost taxpayers nothing.
Awesome.
So then we went and wrote the protocol, and now that protocol that Chief Madden was speaking about is going to be the model for the entire county.
Oh, wow. Okay, so we're kind of trailblazing then.
And that and the other thing I would like to mention is one thing that Chief Scott, he heads it up, but he's very proud of, but he really doesn't tout himself with it, is we give yearly physicals also. It's not required to have a yearly physical. It's only required, you know, to get one every five years or something like that through NFPA, but we do give yearly physicals to the firefighters.
Great.
So for that type of thing. And we know that it has caught certain types of cancer in our personnel half a dozen times already. So we are.
Thank you.
On another note there, as far as where Commissioner Maturro's coming from, where we need to have some more help is at the state legislative level for the cancer presumption bill. It's come close. It's been kicked around for the last two sessions. I'm involved in a legislative conference call on the 11th, so I'll find out, you know, I've been pushing for that, and I'll find out more to see what direction that's going. But as elected officials, there's only so much that we can do, whereas the public can help us with that by calling their representatives and asking them to support it, because there's been many, many studies, and the reason that we bought all this extra bunker gear and we buy the best equipment is that when these guys, the 25-year guys, and before them got hired, they were just the tough guys that ran in and never thought about the long-term effects. Obviously, you know, science has gotten a lot better, and we now realize that the carcinogens are going to follow you around, and you're going to breathe them in, and you do that for a career, and you go to retire, and I think at one point, I don't know what it is now, but I know about two, three years ago, the average fireman only collected their pension for like six point, less than seven years, and they died. And they were retiring at a relatively young age, but we're dying because of, I guess, the lack of awareness of the dangers that they were facing. So I think that if we could get any help at all from the outside to push for the cancer presumption bill, because there's a lot of scientific evidence that proves that a lot of these firefighters got cancer from on the job, but insurance being the way it is, well, prove it, well, if we can get a law change that, you know, assuming that you're, you know, you're not living a crazy lifestyle and smoking and doing things that are bad for you, and that was written in the law, that you can assume that the cancer came from the job, and I think it would be helpful for everybody in the industry to know that at least they had that protection down the road. But that's in addition to all the safety equipment that we're doing. I think that's just as important a key for the things, I don't think that the people being hired in the last couple of years are going to face as major a crisis as the people that were hired 30 years ago because of what we've learned, but the fact of the matter is, when they do get cancer, we should be responsible for it. So that's all I can add to that.
Thank you.
I wanted to comment. I'm not too sure why you asked the question, but I've been on this board for 12, 14 years. As far as I know, this Board of Commissioners has always provided anything and everything that the staff has asked them for. So I don't know why you're concerned at this point or think that we would not be doing the best we can. And I'm also concerned, is the lung bill, the heart bill, the cancer bill, is that something that we're supposed to be sponsoring as a Board of Commissioners? I'm not too sure that's thorough representation for the people, you know, so.
Actually, that's a, our group that we belong to, the Florida Association of Special Districts, has been one of the driving forces, and the lobbyists and attorneys have been behind it. Fitz and Hagan, she was all over that for a while, and now with a full change in government in Tallahassee, it's a different climate, and like I said, I don't know what the climate is. I will find out at the next conference call. But it's just something that has been brought up a couple of times and has not made it through. I know there's a lot of support for it, but for some reason, it just hasn't crossed the finish line. And as Commissioners, we can only do so much when we go to Tallahassee and we talk to our representatives, but as citizens, I think that, I think it's an important issue.
I'm just not too sure it's the Commissioners' business. I support these bills, by the way. I'm not to deprive the firemen, particularly firemen who are experienced in heavy fire duty, of every protection that they can. I just try to define my role as a fire commissioner. I'm not on the good boy club. I'm on here as representative of the people and to provide the best fire department we possibly can, and I think that's what we have done. Chief Dagel and everyone, chief sitting here, and the chief's before you, so it's not something new. And that's why I wanted to, like Jeff, ask this question.
I can respond to that.
I ask because it's a high number since our last meeting of five, and I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can, because I'm not a fireman, and I wanted to know.
Commissioner Murphy?
I just hope that you don't think that there's been something in the past.
No, nor was I inferring that or implying it.
Commissioner Murphy?
Mr. Chairman, in honor of the passing of our President, George Herbert Walker Bush, I noticed on the way here that many flags were flying at half-staff. Not all, many were not flying at half-staff, and I was wondering what we could do to help our community understand that when we have a national incident or passing or reasons for lowering the flag to half-staff, what we could do as a district to help our community become a little more aware, since stepping forward and setting example for other communities to honor such a passing.
It's a 30-day.
It asked for 30 days. On the way here, I noticed even some shopping centers and churches had their flags at full staff, and I'd like everyone just to think, what can we do as a community to help everyone understand through communications, whether it be the press or emails or cert team or whatever? Everyone would give some thought to this, and perhaps next month, we can come up with an idea of what we could do collectively to help that awareness. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, on to old business. Anybody have anything? I do. I would like an update of where we are on dealing with the school board and still, are we still considering it would be an option to put a fire station at the school, or have we decided that it's not going to work? But I haven't, for some reason, I mean, we went over and looked at it, but I don't know where we are in the process between Mora and us.
I would say that the next step is to contact Mora, which we have not done. However, we, as you know, we obviously did a walkthrough through there.
Right.
The next step is to contact Mora, and we'll move forward with that to contact him, bring him out there and see if he has any other options than the ones we've looked at.
I think we need to move forward with that only because they gave up that time, and they sent us a lot of paperwork on it, and even if we don't do it, I think out of respect from where we sit, we should move that back onto a front burner, and if we're going to, if it becomes part of our long-term plan, then so be it. We'll work with them. If it's not an option and it's not going to work, we tried, but I think that, you know, I know we've been busy, but I think we'd, I'd like to see that moved back onto our agenda.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Don't we have a site on Strike Lane for a firehouse?
We do.
Yes, sir.
Siting firehouses is not a function of what we think might be a good idea. I believe it should be a function of response times, activity, mostly response times and coverage, so.
That's exactly what it would, yeah, you're exactly right.
So I ask you then, who's, who has cited this school as the proper location? Economically, it might be.
It was a board consensus, and one of the reasons that I brought it forward was as much of a security issue to help the school with activity there all the time as it was a response. And when we rode, the chief and the assistant chief and myself rode, and from our site on Strike Lane to the driveway of the school property is, it was what, two?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, yeah. It was exactly two minutes. And having said that, what the point here was that possibly, if we did it here, maybe other departments in the county, as the schools are going to be expanding significantly, and obviously, with schools are expanding, the reason for that is that the population's expanding, which means fire departments are expanding, and it just looked like maybe a win-win to actually provide security because somebody's there 24 hours a day, as well as maybe be a little bit more cost-effective in land purchasing and things along those lines. Now, having said that, we don't have a lot of money invested in the Strike Lane property, and we can still serve, because we don't have very good response times on that side of town right now. It's probably the last hole we have. But it would have just been something, thinking outside the box, that if we could jointly do it with the school board, it would maybe be a deterrent, having somebody there 24 hours a day for unfortunately, the bad things that seem to be happening in our world. But that was the only reason. We already own the land. We know we can build a station there. It was just something, and we approached, we met with the superintendent and the director of operations for the Economically, it might be.
It was a board consensus, and one of the reasons that I brought it forward was as much of a security issue to help the school with activity there all the time as it was a response. And when we rode, the chief and the assistant chief and myself rode, and from our site on Strike Lane to the driveway of the school property is, it was what, two?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, yeah. It was exactly two minutes. And having said that, what the point here was that possibly if we did it here, maybe other departments in the county, as the schools are going to be expanding significantly, and obviously, when schools are expanding, the reason for that is that the population's expanding, which means fire departments are expanding, and it just looked like maybe a win-win to actually provide security because somebody's there 24 hours a day, as well as maybe be a little bit more cost-effective in land purchasing and things along those lines. Now, having said that, we don't have a lot of money invested in the Strike Lane property, and we can still serve, because we don't have very good response times on that side of town right now. It's probably the last hole we have. But it would have just been something, thinking outside the box, that if we could jointly do it with the school board, it would maybe be a deterrent, having somebody there 24 hours a day for unfortunately the bad things that seem to be happening in our world. But that was the only reason. We already own the land. We know we can build a station there. It was just something, and we approached, we met with the superintendent and the director of operations for the school district, and they were very much on board with it. And the only negative they came back with was that, God, we wish you'd have done this a couple of years ago when we were drawing up the plans. And my answer to them, well, you didn't know a couple of years ago you were going to build the high school. It kept moving all over. It could just be so. It was like it would have been difficult for us to do that. But anyway, that's the reason behind it. We don't have to do it. It was just from a public safety overall standpoint, it was something that the board considered we would look into.
I don't think we should cite any firehouse without having a consultant, outside agency, someone to help us. I don't believe this board is, has the expertise to do something like that. Matter of fact, we just renovated a firehouse on Route 41. And if we had examined this thoroughly at that time, we may have relocated that firehouse instead of rebuilding it.
I'll respond to that, sir.
Yeah, please.
When we look at where to build firehouses, we do do studies. We have done studies. We did the Fitch Report study. And that study reviewed the exact locations of what the perfect deployment of fire stations would be in the Benita Springs area. And surprisingly, well, not really surprisingly, but actually, the locations of our stations are almost exactly where the computer model put them with our road connectivity.
Who made the computer model?
The Fitch study. That study did a whole organizational study, which the board paid money for, which we did. And they evaluated.
We had the Fitch study after we already had made the decision to put the fire stations in, though.
Yes, because that was determined by the study before. We had another facilities and operational study that had a five to seven-year plan in it, which showed the locations of the stations and where they are and exactly where they should be. So therefore, it showed the heat maps of where our calls were, response times, where we were lacking. So when we decided to buy, now that's in a perfect world where there's no construction or there's no, if you were just to be able to put it down and there was no road connectivity issues. So when we put those stations and we bought that property out there in Strike Lane, that's where the heat map showed exactly where we needed a station. And, you know, honestly, when we pinpoint the stations just as a staff, we've been working here for 30, 25, 30 years, we know exactly where our response times falter and don't falter. So basically, all the study did was confirm what we already knew our location problems were.
No, I would comment on that. That's not your decision on the fire station location. That's our decision.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And it's our due diligence to make sure that the decision is correct. And that due diligence is to hire some experts to tell us.
Yes, sir, you do hire experts.
We have done that.
If we second everything that you do, then we ought to pack up our little seats and go home.
Well, we don't pick the sites. We just say yea or nay on the sites if we agree. But there's, we don't go out looking at land and say, hey, I want to build a firehouse there. Moving on to new business, I need a motion to the disposal of assets report.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No discussion?
On the disposal of assets?
I just wanted to make one comment, a very small comment. Very nice report, except it's written in the smallest type of puzzle in the world. I wish if you were going to do reports like this for us, so I could read them. I guess that's about type four or six type. I guess, no questions really.
Okay. Have you looked over the proposed 2019 regular meeting dates? If you have, we need a motion to approve them.
I'm over with approve that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
The district retirees' insurance merging with anchor benefits, I need a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Commissioner Fitzgerald, are you voting on any of this stuff?
I would, if I had half a chance, I'd ask you a question on it. I don't know what it is. If one of you could tell me what it is.
It was sent out a week ago.
Okay.
We review all this stuff a week before the meeting. And I need a motion for the contract adjustment in the chief's salary.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Chief, sure, report.
Yes, gentlemen, the only thing I have to report is just to advise the board that Lee County is in the process of revising their COPCN for ALS transport, ALS non-transport, and BLS non-transport. As many of you are aware, we've been through an issue when we attempted to apply for our transport license. Since then, they're rewriting the ordinance. So it's not come to fruition as of yet, but I have been placed on a committee to try to work through some, what I consider, highly significant issues with the document itself that could impact the district as we move forward with our level of service. To comment any further on that with the specifics would be a little premature, but just to make the board aware that I will be working on that.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Assistant Chief DeWitt?
I just have one, just one quick acknowledgement. If you guys noticed, there's some goings-on out east, right here and there in our training facility. We have 24 Chilean firefighters that are down in conjunction with MCI and the Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District's Training Facility. They're here doing training all week long. They're doing live burns on Wednesday, and you guys are invited. The media's going to come here along with city council and possibly the mayor. Then they're also going to have a presentation.
What time is that?
I'm not sure. I will get that. They're still working out the details with the media. Then also, they're having a final dinner with the Chilean firefighters on Friday, and I'll find that out, too. He's supposed to, they're supposed to finalize all that with us tomorrow.
Chief, I don't want to prolong the meeting. What's the reader's digest? How do we end up with Chilean firefighters in Benita Springs?
Basically, what it is, is they go to certain places in the United States, a couple groups of them. Six months ago, they were in Reno and did it in Reno, and Rito sponsored them. Richard Gonzalez is the president of MCI, who we do a public-private partnership with, with our training facility. He got in contact with them, asked if we would help them out with the facility.
Okay.
Loan some of our equipment to them while they did it. So they are here doing, you know, basic firefighting, doing vehicle extraction.
I think it's awesome. I think it's incredible.
Absolutely. So it's something great. If you drive by next couple of days and want to know what's going on.
I actually have noticed it, but it.
It's something great, and it's, we're going to have a little presentation, or they're going to have a little like dinner at the end of it all. And MCI and the Benita Springs Fire Control Training Facility is going to issue certificates like for 40 hours of general firefighting so they can take that back to the Chilean.
Very cool.
You're very welcome.
Deputy Chief Scott?
Nothing, sir.
Deputy Chief Madden, I see your report. You have anything you want to add to it?
Yes, sir.
Nice job. Thank you. Any public comment? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.